The reorganization meeting for seven eleven twenty-four to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next I'd like to issue the oath of office to Richard Sirianni.
So, Richard, please raise your hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Board of Education.
Of Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. You have that broken down nice.
Thank you.
Please, sir. Okay, and next I would like to swear and cry Julian.
Craig, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that.
I do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of the Board of Education Number.
Of the Board of Education Number.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And next I would like to issue the oath of office to our Superintendent of Schools. Will you please repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly solemnly swear. Easy for you to say.
That I I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Superintendent of Schools.
Superintendent of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Can you please sign this for me? Oh, now I would like to go ahead and open for nominations and or in order for the Board of President for the Board of Education for the twenty-four twenty-five school year.
Thank you, nominee Jason Myers for president.
I'll second it. Any other nominations? Okay, all those nominations are now closed. All those in favor of electing Jason Myers as Board President? Those opposed? Aye.
Aye first.
Aye first.
Aye first.
Aye first. Well, aye.
Vons.
Any opposed? Okay, and then any of saying? Okay, motion carries and vote is completed for Jason Myers to be elected as the new Board President for the twenty-four twenty-five school year. I'd like to issue you the oath of office. If I grab that one, one second. Jason, please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Now faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Board President.
The Board President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Please sign this for me.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, I will now call for a vote for Vice President nominations.
Make a motion and perhaps McDermott.
Is there a second? Any other nominations? Okay, nominations be closed. All those in favor of electing Bob McDermott as Vice President, say aye.
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 The opposed stating. Motion carries. Congratulations, Bob. I'll issue the oath to Bob.
Oh, you get to do it.
Yes, he does. It's repeated after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board Vice President.
Of Board Vice President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thanks, Craig. Just enough line for you.
Just enough.
Hey, moving on the agenda, a call for a motion to accept number six letters A through H, which is the appointment of other officers. District Clerk, District Clerk Substitute, Purchasing Agent, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Internal Claims Auditor, Deputy Treasurer and Attendance Clerk as presented. I can get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'm starting it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And the rest of the agenda items will do in groups of five. Keep things moving. Call for a motion to accept numbers seven through eleven, which are the appointments by the Board of Education. Eight bonding of positions, nine approved tax bill collection, over and under one dollar. Ten designation of depositories and eleven designation of official newspapers. Can I get a motion for that?
I'm going to motion. One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stained, opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll call for a motion to accept numbers twelve through sixteen. Twelve, the approval of petty cash funds. Thirteen, the approval of the designation of signatures for checks. Fourteen, the authorization to sign contracts. Fifteen, the authorization of bid openings. And sixteen, the adoption of cooperative bidding resolutions as presented. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I will call for a motion to accept numbers seventeen through twenty-one. Seventeen is approve the best value bidding resolution. Eighteen authorization for signatures on claims and payrolls. Nineteen approved minute, I'm sorry, approved meeting dates and times listed on the Board of Education calendar. Twenty authorization to invest district funds. Twenty-one authorization to make credit applications as presented. Can I get a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. So call for a motion to accept numbers twenty-two through twenty-six. Twenty-two is adoption of policies and bylaws. Twenty-three appointment of committees on special education and preschool. Twenty-four is appointment of impartial hearing officers. Twenty-five, the appointment of surrogate parent. Twenty-six approve the appointment of staff on an interim basis, all is presented. Can I get a motion for that?
A moment.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll call for a motion to accept numbers twenty-seven through thirty-one. Twenty-seven to approve school physicians. Twenty-eight to approve homestead, non-homestead tax rate system for levying property taxes. Twenty-nine, the authorization to submit applications and reports for federal school lunch and milk programs. Thirty, the authorization to file for federal grant applications. And thirty-one to appoint school attorney as presented. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll call for a motion to accept numbers thirty-two through thirty-six. Thirty-two is the appointment of civil service officer. Thirty-three, the appointment of Title Nine Compliance Officers. Thirty-four, the appointment of external auditors. Thirty-five, the appointment of internal auditors. Thirty-six, the appointment of district audit committee as presented. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, any discussion on any of those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A call for a motion to accept numbers thirty-seven through forty-one. Thirty-seven, the appointment of Capitol Project Committee. Thirty-eight, the appointment of Policy Committee. Thirty-nine, the adoption of nine thirteen resolution. Forty, the appointment of District Records Management Officer. Forty-one, the dis- the appointment of District Records Access Officer for Freedom of Information Law. As presented, can I have a motion? Okay. Any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Next, I'll call for a motion to accept numbers forty-two through forty-six. Forty-two, the appointment of District Records Access Appeals Officer for Freedom of Information. Forty-three, the appointment of Orleans Niagara Health Insurance Consortium Representative. Forty-four, to prove yearly mailing of reasonable assurance letters. Forty-five, the authorization for sports playoffs and sectionals competitions. And forty-six, to approve resolution resolution for authorization of budget transfers as presented. Can I get a motion for that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers forty-seven through fifty-one. Forty-seven, the authorization for the approval of employee travel and approval of travel by the Superintendent. Forty-eight, to approve the mile lunch reimbursement rate. Forty-nine, to approve standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials. Fifty, to approve fiscal consultants. Fifty-one, to approve administrative investment firm as presented. Can I get a motion for that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Call for a motion to accept numbers fifty-two through fifty-six. Fifty-two, to approve the agreement with Medicaid Consulting Services. Fifty-three, to approve bond counsel. Fifty-four, to approve Medicaid Compliance Officer. Fifty-five, to approve education educational office official, I'm sorry. And fifty-six, to approve Dignity Act coordinators.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion care. Call for a motion to accept numbers fifty-seven through sixty-one. Fifty-seven is to approve the athletic code of conduct. Fifty-eight is to approve the attendance officer. Fifty-nines to approve representative and signatory to the Niagara Power Coalition and Host Community Standing Committee. Sixty to approve the hair compliance officer. Sixty-one to approve school pesticide representative. Can I get a motion for those as presented?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Call for a motion to accept number sixty-two through sixty-six. Sixty-two, to approve chemical hygiene officer. Sixty-three, to approve district residency officer. Sixty-four, to approve homeless liaison. Sixty-five, to approve cellphone use. And sixty-six, to approve Indian policies and procedures. Can I get a motion for those as presented? Bob, second? Second, Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, now call for a motion to adjourn. The reorg meeting. Get a motion.
I'll make it.
Alright. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well done.
We're gonna roll into the executive room?
Nope, afterward.
Okay.
We have.
Right into the regular meeting?
So what we did for somebody knows what we did and we only do it for the reorg meeting is we was we put out the notice. It says that, you know, the regular meetings immediately follows the the reorg, so we can go into that and then we'll do it exactly right afterward.
Okay. Alright, so. Can I do that?
You can.
It's clear that the regular portion of the board meeting is now open. Need a motion to to open the session?
Yeah, I'm commotion.
Second, second, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now in public session for the regular board meeting. Stand for the pledge again.
We can absolutely do that.
Stand for the.
You get your.
The real me.
That's right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um. Okay, there we go. Under Board Commendations Presentations, the first one there is presentation of the Districtwide Safety Plan. Each year, we have to have the Districtwide Safety Plan approved. There were. There were some changes as there are every year to the Districtwide Safety Plan. I'm just gonna touch on what those changes were. There were some action dates that are in that plan that, of course, are changed each year, so that was changed. There was a new. That a new item added where it was, you had to have something in there about your district CEO, so we had that line. There, we also had to update our plan to include our weapons detection systems, since we have weapons detection systems in place. We had enough some updates to if we have potential emergencies. Where will, not only where we'll go, but what some of the off-site hazards may be that would impact our district, and we talked about all of those as part of our district safety team. So those are now included in this plan. All the functional annexes were updated. In other words, you're locked down, you're lockout, just to be consistent with what's required in New York State. There were some revisions to the the chain of command and also some revisions to building admin, as there's been some changes there, so those names are all changed in there as well. There are, there's a section there about some essential positions, and there was a revision to one of the titles of the Director of C I T with Jeff leaving and Chen coming on board. The other thing that we have to have in our plan is the members of our district safety team, so they're all also included, so those are the changes. Number two, there's a requirement for us to have a public hearing about the Districtwide Safety Plan, so I just told you as a group what some of those changes were. If you have any questions or if anybody in the public has any change questions about our Districtwide Safety Plan, they can certainly ask now. We actually have to leave this open for a thirty-day period, and then will the plan will be to bring this back to the August meeting to vote on it. To to have everybody for the beginning of the school year. But any questions, anything right now about district safety, district safety plan? So number three, another requirement annually is that we were, the the district receives title funds, Title One Funds, and those are grant funds. As an requirement, we need to make sure that we're engaging parents and families in that process. So we actually have to leave. The the that policy really hasn't changed much, but we have to leave this open for thirty days. If anybody has comments, questions, if anybody has suggestions, recommendations on where they believe some of those monies should be spent, they can certainly let us know, and then we have, we would act on this again in August. To give you an idea, you know, our Title One Funds, most of those funds are used for counselors. There's certain things that you can spend those dollars on, but we actually have. In each of our buildings that receive title funds, we have committees there at at the school level, and they actually have to host meetings to ask for involvement and ask for recommendations, thoughts from the that school community, each individual school community on where maybe they think some of those funds should be used instead. Okay, so that also has to be left open, and that's why it's the right now there'd be an opportunity for anybody. Number four, a public hearing on that. Anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer them now. If not, that'll stay open for thirty days, the August meeting, we would, I'd ask you to vote on it.
That's all you got for that? Okay. Privilege of the floor. If anyone has any residents comments? No? Okay. Consensus. Sorry, consensus agenda items. Now call for a motion to approve the following consensus agenda items, one through seven as submitted.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on any of the items? Or things to move separately? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Staining, motion carries. Now call for a motion to approve the personnel report items, numbers one through twenty-five as submitted. Motion for that?
So, second.
Okay, anything to be separated or discussed? Okay. All in favor of approving the items of the personnel report, please say aye.
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 Opposed, standing? Motion carries. Hey, moving on to standing committees, the Audit Committee. Moving to stand standing committees, we had a, anything from the Audit Committee, Allison, do it.
Yesterday, we met with the auditors who gave us our rebound line, because it's gonna curl over the next few months as they.
And let's see, what do you call that, Allison, the external audit?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then we have a informational item that is. Some fundraisers that are listed there. There's no action to be done on that, right? Moving on to the Ex officio students report. Anything for us, Jonah?
Jonah, got anything?
Anything? If you push your, push your button there if you would. There you go.
Not much.
Okay, and for the President's Report, I don't have anything other than to say congratulations and welcome to Craig, and Wendy, you've been with us a couple meetings, and congrats on being here and Rick as well for reelection. Send it over to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Staff and Tom, could you tell us where we are?
Yes, thank you. We're in very good position heading into the next school year. This point in time, we're looking to fill some of the S R P positions that are abundant in the district, of course, bus drivers, Segway State will be one of those target areas as well as bus attendants for us as we move into the next month and a half or so of the summer. Rain. We recently used our Facebook page to help us distribute our QR code just for ease of use for some of those individuals might be looking for positions in the district, whether it be full-time or substitute. So that is out on social media as well as on our Facebook, our official Facebook page as a district. There was also a run in the Sentinel right just prior day to Pandemic Day. So that did garner some traction. We've been taking some calls, doing a lot of interviews for substitute teacher positions, which is encouraging. That's something that I shared with the Superintendent earlier today, that I've had seven in the past two days just interviewing, which is a significant swing in the positive direction from where we're. So maybe more people are coming back into the market post pandemic and post grant fund, so we're just gonna continue our work there, and we're in really nice position, frankly, to get ready for the start of the twenty-four twenty-five school year.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you got more, yeah. Keep rolling.
Thanks. The, I just wanted to make a comment about graduation. First, special thanks to Al Pogel. For those that don't know, Al Pogel really. You know, soups to nuts, puts together a graduation ceremony and takes great pride in it, and the weather couldn't have been better. It was the first year in a few years where we weren't sweating it up until the time of graduation. It was absolutely, literally not sweating it out there either. It it couldn't have been more beautiful. I want to thank Dan and Ryan. They do a phenomenal job with the sound and the the ability for people who want to watch it on the on the feed, you know, not being there in person. That's a really important thing for some people, so thank you. And I'll thank Ryan whenever I see him, but really important thing. There's so many people to thank, and I'd just be leaving people out. I do want to thank Vince Schiffer for for coming that night and for some of the work that he did ahead of time, you know, for the words that I was able to share. But it was just a, it was a really great night, and you know, the Board, the Board of Education lined up there as all the students are walking through. It's just a really neat evening, and I don't know, I don't know if we've had a better one, you know, across the board with how everything worked, you know, certainly since I've been here. So thank you to everybody who who makes that happen. There's so many. I do have to say, our facilities department, holy smokes, the work that they did from the time that you you drove an office on their settlement road and saw the the way the whole campus looked, you know, to your walk back there, it was beautiful and it was immaculate. And by the way, they're doing all that work getting ready for graduation at the same time that they're moving everything around for exams and closing everything else up and, you know, meeting the demands that are inside the building as ten-month employees are getting ready to leave, and they're trying to help them, so they were that they were really phenomenal and did an incredible job. The NISBA Conference, I was asked by Renee to let all of you know that the NISBA Conference is July thirtieth. This year it is in New York City. I'll let you talk about that, maybe if you want, under new business, if it's something that you're interested in, I'll just say this. I, you know, in the past, the New York City ones, they just have not worked out incredibly well, simply because of the 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 capacity. You know, they get so many people who want to go to the ones in New York City, and the the rooms can't handle the number of people who are signed up for the different sessions, but all of you can talk about that, and if it's something that you're interested in, the registration does open on July thirtieth, okay? Either tonight or soon thereafter. I think the Board will want to have in place chairpersons and committee members for Audit Committee, Capitol Project Committee, Safety Committee, and Policy Committee. That's something I'm putting out there for all of you. Today's Thursday, right? Yesterday, we hosted the Greenway Ecological Standing Committee. They had a a meeting that they actually asked if they could use our facility because one of the upcoming projects that they'll be looking at to consider is our ECO Campus Project, so they were able, thank goodness, the weather did break just long enough for them to walk outside around the time that they had planned on their agenda to go out there, so. Really, really nice, but that, you know, we'll we'll hopefully, they they weren't considering our project yet, but they wanted to see it before they had a chance to talk about it when it does come up on their agenda, so I thought that was really a positive thing for us in the district. So I thought that was really, um, a positive thing for us in the district. Um. Today I was able to sit through, uh, NISBA had a, um. A webinar on foundation aid and Brian Fessler from NISBA, um, mediated, you know, the the webinar, but, um. Two members from the Rockefeller Institute were, um, the ones talking for most of the time about foundation aid, foundation formula. What I, what I'll say is this, um. Some of my concerns, fears, um, were, um. I put them aside after this meeting. I, I don't have a, a lot of the fears that, that I think I had for us knowing that, and I said this publicly, so I'll say it this way now. I was a little concerned that the former head of the division of budget was the person who was really put in charge at the Rockefeller Institute in looking at the foundation aid formula. Well, he was the one who was working on the foundation aid formula for a really long time. But what I was, what kind of made me feel better about the whole thing was first, this, the Rockefeller Group is charged with coming up with recommendations. None of which the legislators or the governor are obligated to take and put into law. So they can pick and choose, they can, you know, listen. He, he was very clear about this and I get this. It's a very short window to look at a very complex formula. They, they have to have something in by December first. They just received this charge near the end of the school year. I want to say May, June, ended May, June. Um, so they don't have a long time to look at this formula. They have some public hearings coming up. This was, this was for NIS, people who are connected in NISBA. They're just going to do some more of those webinars, but they're also going to have public hearings. They had to have three. I think they have five or six set up uh, to get some feedback and then they need to start their work. They talked about, um, so many pieces of the formula that need, need a look at. Ju- just one example. The, they're still using the two thousand census for determining what the poverty rates are for school districts. So if your poverty rate has fluctuated, um, either way, since two thousand, that's just one of the factors in the formula. That's not represented in the funding that you receive. So now it, to, to be fair. If a district has had seen an increased poverty rate, it doesn't mean necessarily they're going to get more money. It's, it's, it's how much is their poverty rate changed compared to other school districts in New York State? Okay. So that's one of the many factors that they're going to be looking at. Um. Again, they have a short window to, to, to look at this. Um, and then the governor and legislature will have to determine and, and Alice and I were actually talking about this right before this meeting. You know, will that be for this upcoming year? Or will it be the year after? Because by December, they're already putting a lot of their uh, budget in place. So the, the idea that turning this information on December one and knowing that the governor's budget comes out at February first, right? Um, there's not a real big window there. So, so we'll see how, how it goes. Um, we'll certainly be listening. There, there's an opportunity and I, all, all the board members should see the emails. There's one coming up in Buffalo. Allison are talking about whether or not we, you know, we go, I think I probably got the, the meat and potatoes through this webinar today. Um. And we'll be waiting to see what the recommendations are. Um. Jonah, welcome to your fir- first official meeting. You actually got to give your first report. I know there'll be more detail in the future once we get up and running. So that'll be fun, right? And last, and I thank you for somebody mentioning it earlier, I think it was Allison. Today is Maureen's last meeting as district clerk. Um, you've been district clerk for seven, seven years, um, which is awesome and you've done an incredible job. I know, um, these meetings wouldn't run near smoothly if, if you had been here and the work that you put into it to make sure that they do. I, I can just tell the board this because really the district clerk is an employee of the board, not an employee of the superintendent. Um. But anything that I've ever asked to for, in an effort to make any of your lives easier, is done incredibly quickly and done with care to make sure that all of you are in the best position that you can be when you sit down for these important public meetings. So Maureen, thank you for the, the care that you've taken in doing that job for seven years.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent on his report? Okay. Uh, any other reports to the board? Any items for board discussion tonight? The old business? New business? Any public comments? Last chance.
Can I just, just one, one thought on the new business thing? If you wanted to do that tonight with regard to
To the committees?
To the committees, you can. If you want to appoint chairs, you can just do that part. If you, and that comes from, from you, if you want to have discussion about it, certainly you can do that. Um. I'm trying to think the, um. Don't know what information will come between now and our next meeting that would be urgent if you want to talk, you know, amongst yourselves separately and then decide that for the next meeting, you can certainly do that too.
Um, does anyone have any thoughts on that? Otherwise, I mean, I can talk to each of you and see what your pleasure is and then.
It might be here to decide because we're all here tonight. So.
And we are.
Yeah. Cause I feel like we might run into.
Hey, um, so for the audit committee currently, um, myself, Mr. Sirianni and Mr. Lee are on there. Does the, does the president step off the committees typically? Is that?
I think there's been more of that. Yeah. But, you know, but that's completely up to you. No. Like Steve's been involved with the capital project committee.
Uh, does anyone have an interest to be on audit committee in particular? No? And I'll say. Um, I think, yeah, well, I guess we'll keep it to what, what has been previously. Uh. Do you want to be the chair or Mike? Okay. So capital projects now is Bob and Julie.
Cause Steve was on.
And do you both?
Steve was on.
Desire continuing with that one?
I'd like to keep it like Ken, but.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter. I've been on it since before I was even a board member, but if somebody wanted it, I, I mean, I. But there's also a spot where Steve was as well.
But there's a.
That's something that interests you, Greg or Wendy or?
Safety policy or both, or it might be all well, so.
Okay.
It's up to.
So you, you prefer safety and policy up here, so. Capital project?
Yeah? Okay.
I'm going to step away from policy.
Oh, you're going to step away from policies?
Yeah.
Okay.
Safety, we've only had one, but you can certainly have more than one.
We've only had one person serve on that?
We still have a spot on policy anyways because of John Focucci. He was on it and hasn't. So just saying you can do whatever you want to do, but there, there would be.
I just want to, I mean, I, I want to capital, I don't want to be.
I'll do whatever I.
Just, just so everyone knows on the safety committee. It was just recently that board members had to be on there. They didn't have to before. So we've had board members, we had a ex-board member for a little bit there and stayed on it, I think. And then, and then Bob jumped on. So there's no requirement to have more than that. You just have to have a board representative. So you, you can always on any, on those types of committees, you can have up to three. You can't have more than three because then you have.
So is anyone interested in that then?
Safe one.
Safety.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay on safety.
Okay. Is anyone else, would they like to be a part of that? Not necessarily that we need somebody, but. Police officers or?
You only have to have one.
How many meetings are there?
Four.
During the day? Yeah. I can. That's why I kind of, I grabbed because it, it says during the day like ten o'clock.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, can you, can he be on as? Pop in at his?
Yep.
And actually then you're filling.
It's a good idea.
You're not, you're not allowed to fill in the board. You're filling, you know, kind of the, the, the police side too.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, kind of neat. Okay.
Um, and then policy committee, who's currently on that one? Julia is.
And Bob.
And Bob and Bob.
We'd have a spot, so.
And John was on.
So Bob, you want to step off of that?
There's others that want to get on it.
Okay. So Wendy? Sure.
If you, if I, you know, I mean, I'll stay on it if, if there's an opening.
If you want, do you want to go on policy?
You want policy?
We'll take you wherever we know is there.
We'll give you initiation here.
Policy, just to give an idea. So you know what you're getting. Policy is about four meetings a year as well. Okay. So because they, they come in, uh, they, they're right before board meetings. We schedule on board nights. So what happens is this, the information about the policies comes in from, um, BOCs. Here in one BOCs, they give us, we're part of a policy co-serv, they have attorneys, right? They give us the policies to look at, we review them, um, and then make sense. So you get them ahead of time. We talk about them at the meetings and then, then they come on the board agenda. So four times a year.
I'm okay with it.
So we have.
The Bob will pop off.
I'll pop off.
And you two will pop up.
Right.
Craig.
Julie, you're staying on?
Yep, I'll stay on.
All right. And then, um, we need to appoint chairs of each of those. Is that correct? Say anyone desire to be chair of the audit committee?
Like what? It don't matter. I mean, I could take it.
Okay. Rick?
Rick is the chair.
Uh, capital project committee, um, Bob, do you want? Okay. Is that all right with everyone? And safety committee, um. Do you want to be the point person then based on your schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Let's send him a schedule. We, we already sent the schedule out.
And then policy committee, which chair?
Yeah, I can stay with him.
All right. Very good. Um, let's see. Is that our old business or new business? What was that? Any other new business?
Oh, yeah, if you want to talk about that.
Sure. Um, when did you say, uh, that opens?
July thirtieth. Especially in New York City.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's only two hotels that closed that you can stay at.
Renee, what are the dates?
Twenty four, it's a, it's weird. I think it starts on.
It's like October, it's the end of.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
It's a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah.
We need a motion to send them in or, or whoever wants.
No, it's, no, this is just to get the idea, people are, if, first of all, if there's interest and then we would need to know if people want to go just before the thirtieth. So Renee's ready to give them, get the names in there because it's like a it's, it's a fight for hotel room.
It's a fight for hotel. And if you all want to stay in the same place, it's best if you communicate to me who all wants to go at the same time. So I can book and, and reserve it for everyone over the same time.
But here that ten twenty to ten twenty-two.
I'm definitely interested.
Yeah, I'm interested in going.
True. Um. Only thing is I'll be going with, um, BOCs, so.
Oh, excuse you.
I'm going to make them.
I like the way you think.
I want to keep our budget down. I got that from Allison.
She appreciates that. That way it's.
But try to book the same hotel.
Yeah, you're going to hang with us, right?
Yeah.
BOCs at the Plaza, is that where they?
Yeah. Yeah, unless BOCs puts you up in a better place, then.
Okay. So there's definitely interest. Why don't you do this? It, we, we have, our next meeting is the twenty-fourth. Okay. Either before then or on that date. Be ready because to, to let Renee know for sure. Okay. But it's good that, it's good that there's, knowing that there's interest, she'll be ready to, 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 to run with it.
I can send you all an email with the details of it, so.
Yeah. I, I will not be gone.
Okay.
All right. So let her know your pleasure and let's see. Oh, what comments or was none unfortunately? Uh, so open up to board member comments. Anyone like to say anything?
Well, I can't say it any better than Dan Judberg. Maureen, we want to thank you for all you've done for the last several years. Thank you forever. You enjoy your.
He took the words out of my mouth, so. Basically, thank you. It was a smooth transition when you came. You did a fantastic job.
Enjoy the extra nights with the grandbabies.
Speaking of which. She's wait, is your phone on right now? We were wondering if Maureen was going to make it because of drive to Ohio, the car is gassed up and ready to go once the new grandbaby comes. So. Yeah, that's right.
Very nice. Okay, um, so going to go to executive session. Uh, kind of a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of particular persons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and executive.
We'll go down to the first, first room on the right.